Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining Congressman Nadler's virtual town hall tonight. I am Congressman Nadler's Press Secretary, Matt Jansen, and I will be moderating tonight's discussion. We had over 2,500 questions submitted for tonight, many relating to the most pressing issues facing our country. We will call on some constituents to ask their questions, which are representative of many that we have received. While we won't be able to answer every question tonight, we will be hosting additional opportunities in the future. We have the chat functionality turned off tonight, but you can always contact our office at any time. Now, I'd like to welcome Congressman Nadler to tonight's town hall.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate that so many of you have joined my town hall tonight during this challenging time in our nation's history. I just returned from the House floor, where Democrats are unanimously opposing a Republican budget resolution that imposes devastating cuts to social safety net programs, including at least $880 billion in cuts to Medicaid just to provide the billionaire donors and corporations with $4.5 trillion in tax breaks. We only needed three Republicans to stand up on behalf of their constituents and do the right thing. But so far, the vote is proceeding, and only one Republican has voted no. We'll see what happens as the vote progresses. This fight is not yet lost, as we have seen over the past week at Republican town halls across the country. The American people will not stand for what Trump and Musk are trying to do to our country. I will continue fighting back against this dangerous budget and against anything else Trump and Musk do to harm our nation. As we saw last week, Trump has made New York, particularly New York City, one of his top targets. As I said in my statement last week, the arguments presented by the Trump administration regarding congestion pricing are utterly baseless. Regardless of whether you support congestion pricing or not, I hope we can all agree that Trump can't be allowed to override New York state law. I will continue fighting alongside the governor and the MTA to protect congestion pricing. I am also coordinating with city officials to fight against Trump's unlawful clawback of $80 million in FEMA funds out of a New York City bank account. I believe the law is on our side regarding these issues, and I'm confident we'll prevail in court. On a national level, Trump's wave of sweeping unconstitutional executive orders has caused immense chaos, including harmful federal funding freezes, unlawfully moving to end birthright citizenship in violation of the Fourteenth Amendment, forcing hospitals to limit gender-affirming healthcare, and more. After personally spending over $280 million to elect Donald Trump, Elon Musk has been handed the keys to the federal government. Together, they're abusing their power to unlawfully stage a hostile takeover of virtually the entire government. They are unlawfully shuttering agencies and firing thousands of dedicated federal employees while continuing to access Americans' sensitive personal information. This is no time for business as usual, and I can assure you, I am fighting back with every tool at my disposal to resist Trump and Musk. With House and Senate Democrats currently limited by being in the minority, we have turned to the courts, to messaging, and to protests as our essential tools. As a senior member of the House Judiciary Committee, my team and I have spent many hours in discussions with legal experts who are preparing and filing lawsuits aimed at halting Trump and Musk's unlawful consolidation of power. Thanks to strong preparation, because we knew Trump would follow Project 2025's playbook, even though he denied it during the campaign, and leadership from blue state attorneys general, especially around Tish James, I am proud to say that 79 different lawsuits have been brought related to about 35 different illegal or unconstitutional executive orders. And Trump continues to lose in court after court. We have won well over a dozen temporary restraining orders, and we feel good about our chances in upcoming decisions on birthright citizenship, the firing of federal workers, and Trump's attempt to fully control independent agencies like the post office. In addition to our advantage in court, the Republican House majority hangs by a mere thread, and the disarray within their ranks is evident. That means that with strong messaging and political pressure, like what we have been seeing in Republican town halls, Democrats can exert considerable influence in upcoming legislative battles. I am coordinating with groups like Protect Our Care to ensure that Republicans are hearing from the Medicaid recipients in their districts every moment of every day. I also continue to join protests against Trump and Musk's actions and encourage others to do the same. I have proudly stood at Stonewall in front of the EPA and elsewhere to tell Trump and Musk that their agenda of hate and division will not go unchallenged. I will continue to fight against Trump and Musk's reckless and dangerous agenda in the streets, in the courts, and in Congress. I will not back down, and I will not stop pushing back against their attempts to dismantle our democracy, strip away our rights, and put corporate interests above the interests of the American people. This fight is far from over, but together, we will resist, we will persist, and we will prevail. So thank you all again for being here tonight. I look forward to hearing from our guests and answering your questions. I'm now proud to introduce our esteemed guest, New York State Attorney General Tish James, who has been leading the legal battle against Trump and Musk.
The Attorney General is not quite ready yet. She'll be here in a few minutes. She's running just a few minutes late. Sorry.
Okay, then.
Why don't we move to Kevin Jennings, the CEO of Lambda Legal, for an update?
Good evening, everyone, and thank you, Congressman Nadler, for the invitation to speak tonight and for your leadership. I believe I had sent a few slides over. I don't know if you're able to show those, Matt?
Yes, we're working on getting them ready.
Great. Wonderful. Thank you. Okay, so we can go to the next slide, please. Lambda Legal was founded in 1973. Next slide, please. Back then, in 43 states, same-sex relationships were a criminal act. In fact, we were denied the right to be a charity by the state of New York because of such laws, and we had to sue to be our own... We were our own first client suing for our own right to exist. But there are lessons from LGBT history I want to make sure you absorb tonight. We fought for 30 years... Next slide, please. Until we got to the Supreme Court in 2003 in Lawrence versus Texas, and we struck those laws down. We fought for another 12 years until we got back to the Supreme Court in Obergefell versus Hodges in 2015 and made marriage equality the law of the land. The lesson of LGBT history is this: We are resilient. We are strong. We fight back, and we win. Next slide, please. While Congressman Nadler is fighting the good fight in Congress, the one branch of government where there is still a Democratic majority is the judiciary. 58% of all sitting judges were appointed by Democratic presidents, meaning the judiciary remains a promising route by which we can fight the Trump administration. Next slide, please. And Lambda Legal is doing exactly that. We have already filed four lawsuits against the Trump administration. Our first lawsuit was to counter his executive order, which seeks to restrict healthcare access for young trans people. And I am happy to tell you, we have scored our first victory. A week ago Thursday, a federal judge in Maryland issued a nationwide restraining order that blocks the implementation of this executive order. Next slide, please. The next lawsuit we filed was on behalf of trans service people who Trump is also trying to ban from the military. I'm happy to tell you that there has been a stay issued on the trans military ban, and that it also cannot go into effect. It is really important about these executive orders to understand they are not laws. Only Congress has the power to pass laws. They are unconstitutional. They are unconscionable, and we are going to strike them down in court. Next slide, please. Last week, we filed two new lawsuits, one with the NAACP Legal Defense Fund against Trump's three executive orders, one of which tries to define sex in a way that erases the actual existence of trans people, and two of which seek to block the diversity, equity, and inclusion programs of both the federal government and federal grantees. Next slide, please. The next day after that lawsuit, we went back to court again, representing a consortium of LGBTQ+ and HIV service providers to challenge the same three executive orders. I'm proud to say that the center here in New York City is one of the plaintiffs in that lawsuit, as is the center in Los Angeles. The LA LGBT Center is the largest LGBTQ+ organization in the world. And I want to compliment Dr. Carla Smith, the ED of the center here in New York. It takes a lot of courage when you rely on federal funding to sue the federal government, but we've got that kind of courage here in New York. Next slide, please. And we at Lambda Legal have seen this movie before. When Donald Trump was first president, we sued him 14 times. We beat him 12 of 14 times. Could you click, please? That is an 86% win rate. We have seen this movie before. We know how it ends, and it ends with Donald Trump being defeated in court. We are going to win this fight, and I thank you for your support. And I want to offer a few ideas about ways you can help. Next slide, please. First of all, send people to the Lambda Legal Help Desk. There, they will get resources and support, and if they're lucky, they might just end up in a plaintiff against Donald Trump. Number two, and I know Congressman Nadler agrees with me on this one, call your federal and state representatives. Let them know you care about this issue. It is very, very important that there be a wave, an idle wave, of popular support against these hateful executive orders that are singling out, in particular, trans people so that our elected officials know that we have their back when they go to bat for us. And number three, if you have time, volunteer with an organization you care about. If you have the ability to make a donation, make a donation. Over 80% of all charitable giving in this country comes from people like me and you. It doesn't come from foundations. It doesn't come from corporations. It comes from average Americans. Your local and national nonprofits need your time. They need your money. Please donate both if you are able. And with that, I'll hand the microphone back to Congressman Nadler.
Kevin, let me ask you a question. You pointed out that, I think it was 58% of the judges were appointed by Democratic presidents, but six of the nine Supreme Court justices were appointed by conservative Republican presidents.
Supreme Court is definitely a concern, but there is a path to victory. You'll probably remember the 2020 case, Bostock versus Clayton County, where the court ruled 6 to 3 that it was illegal to fire people from their jobs based on their gender identity or their sexual orientation. That decision was authored by Justice Gorsuch, a conservative Republican appointee who was joined in the decision by Justice Roberts. Now, since that time, unfortunately, Justice Ginsburg has passed, and she has been replaced by Justice Barrett. If you really want to stay up at night, consider this factoid: If Justice Barrett serves as long as Justice Ginsburg, she'll still be on the bench in 2059. So we're not going to count on her vote, but if the justices vote the same way they did in Bostock in 2020, that is a 5 to 4 majority for us with the three progressive judges that are currently serving on the court. So am I guaranteeing a victory? No. Do I see a path to victory? Yes. And we will learn a lot about that with a case that we in the ACLU, in which we were joined by the Biden administration, argued on December 4th before the Supreme Court, called LW versus Scremety, later changed to the United States versus Scremety. This is a case that seeks to strike down Tennessee's restrictions on access for healthcare for trans youth. We will find out, when the court rules on that, whether or not our 5 to 4 majority from 2020 will hold again. So there is definitely deep cause for concern about the current makeup of the Supreme Court, but there's also a precedent where we can win with the current sitting judges. So let's stay tuned for the Scremety decision, which I think is really going to tell us how things are going to shake out on LGBTQ+, particularly trans issues with the current makeup of the court.
As you may know, I have proposed legislation to impose an 18-year term limit on Supreme Court justices.
Lambda Legal has endorsed your stance. We agree there needs to be serious court reform in America.
Thank you very much.
Pleasure to be here. Let's keep fighting.
Thank you, Kevin. We are still working to get Attorney General Tish James on, but in the meantime, let's hear from Donna Lieberman of the New York Civil Liberties Union.
Hello. Can you hear me, see me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Hello. Thank you so much for having me. And thank you, Representative Nadler, for all you've been doing all these many years and ongoing. I have to remember that I actually came to one of your town halls back in 2016 after the first election of President Trump. And I remember... First of all, I can't believe we're back at this. But I remember saying that I had no idea what was in store for us, but I did know that we were going to fight back with everything we had. Well, this time, we may think that we know all too well what we have in store for us, but sadly, I think that the lengths to which this administration and its lackeys will go is something that we can't even imagine. But once again, I think I'm confident in saying that we will give it... We will put up the good fight, and we will give it everything we've got. And so I'm glad to be partnering with you. And also, before Tish James comes on with our Attorney General, who has really been right out front here in New York. I'm not going to reiterate what Trump and his cronies have done over the past few weeks. It's only been weeks, really. I think everybody who's tuned in tonight is pretty well aware. What I want to go to is to talk about some of the ways that we at the ACLU and the NYCLU, which is the New York affiliate of the ACLU, and there's one in every state, what we're doing to fight back. You know, we prepared for a Trump election, as unthinkable as we thought that was. So in some ways, we were ready, but honestly, there's no way for us to have been ready for this juggernaut that is coming at us. The first thing that we, as New Yorkers, did, and I mean the NYCLU and everybody on this call, and you too, Jerry, because I remember being with you the night before... Or two days before the election at a Prop 1 rally. New York passed by a landslide Prop 1, which enshrined equality into our state constitution, the most robust protection for equal rights in any state constitution in the country. And a lot of people, you know, laughed at us or snickered at us and said, "Ah, you don't need that. This is New York." Well, we did need that, and the best protection that we put into place to prepare us for this situation that we're facing now is getting the ERA into the New York state constitution. So what it protects is, of course, abortion rights, but it protects full equality, full gender equality as a matter of state constitutional law, including LGBTQ rights. Yep, trans rights, too. And it protects the rights of people against discrimination based on age and disability and national origin and ethnicity. So many of the attacks that we are seeing coming from this administration violate the state constitution. We are now embarking on a strategy to ensure that there is a robust jurisprudence of equality developed here in New York. It's not something we've had. We always relied on the federal constitution. We don't have that anymore, or we can't rely on that anymore. So you on this call did that. We on this call did that. And the NYCLU is really proud to have led that campaign alongside you, Representative Nadler. Since the election... And of course, Tish James was very much supportive of that campaign as well. Since the election, the ACLU has fought back in the courts, as you heard, protecting trans rights. The Scremety case predated the election, and so much hangs in the balance in terms of access to care for trans people in that case. But also challenging the ban on gender-affirming care in the executive orders. We've sued over birthright citizenship. We've sued over holding immigrants in Guantanamo. We've sued to stop Trump's fast-track deportation executive order. We're filing FOIL requests to see how DOGE is handling our data. And in addition to that, we've been deluged with requests for know-your-rights trainings, primarily around immigration issues, but immigration issues all over the place, whether it's access to the courts, whether it's for kids going to school. And we're trying to respond to those as best we can. We're doing lots of training trainer meetings, and we're doing trainings ourselves nonstop. We're also organizing at the local level and defending the local electoral process. I'm not sure if folks are aware that in response to the gutting of the federal voting rights law, New York State, with heavy leadership from the NYCLU, passed our own state John L. Lewis Voting Rights Act that prohibits racial gerrymandering. And we won the first lawsuit under that law when we challenged the racial gerrymandering of the Nassau County Legislature. And we won. We won. We won. Huge victory. And that will, not immediately, but over the next several years perhaps, change the composition so that it is a fair representation in the county legislature moving forward. That's a big deal. In addition, we've been pursuing... We put out a Trump agenda, or an anti-Trump agenda. And top priority for us in the state legislature is getting New York State to do what New York City has done, which is passing New York For All that would prohibit the collusion of any governmental entity with the Trump deportation machine, unless required to by court order. That means no state or local resources to promote ICE's agenda. This is hugely important. And I'll be honest with you. Our state legislators need to hear from everybody on this call and everybody that you know that they need to move now. They need to move quickly and unequivocally to pass New York For All. They have not put it on the calendar for debate and discussion and a vote. They need to hear from you that this is what New Yorkers want. In addition, we have a whole agenda published on our website, nyclu.org. You can find it there. We have two data privacy bills. One is on the governor's desk right now, and the other is the Digital Fairness Act that would prohibit sharing of our electronic information, including electronic health information, whether it's medical or commercial health information. You know, things like period trackers and Fitbit information that's used to predict whether we're pregnant or not, for example. Keeping that data from being shared is critically important in this day and age, particularly when we think about who the state governments in red states going after people for taking advantage of healthcare that's available in New York. So go to our website and check out the Trump Agenda. Please sign up. Whether you join the ACLU, which makes you a member of the NYCLU at the same time or not, sign up, join, donate, but also become an activist with the NYCLU and the ACLU so you hear about what's going on, and you can take quick actions or get involved in our people power and our longer-term and harder stuff to do. Support other organizations as well, like Lambda, but Planned Parenthood, you know the list, and take to the streets. This is a five-alarm fire. We need to be visible, loud, and unignorable. My message to you is, this sucks, but if we fight back, we win. There is hope, but only if we all get active. Thank you.
Donna, I assume that New York parole is particularly important because of Mayor Adams' collaboration with the Trump administration?
It was really important without this garbage with Mayor Adams, but it is particularly important, given the fact that the Trump administration is trying to put him on a leash. Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, while we're still working to get the Attorney General on, let's move to the first question. Our first question is from Rebecca Weintraub from the Upper East Side. Rebecca, are you with us?
Hi, I am. Thank you so much. Hi, Congressman. Thank you so much for having us tonight. My question is, Speaker Jeffries has said that ending spending freezes is a priority, but what about stopping Trump's use of DOGE to defund agencies, illegally firing federal workers and giving outsized power to figures like Elon Musk with the federal budget on the line, including Medicare and Social Security? I realize that the House resolution tonight seems to have passed, but when it comes to the actual budget, what specific red lines will the House Democrats hold in these negotiations?
The House Democratic red lines are the same as they've been for a while, and that is, we don't want major cuts in Medicare. We don't want major cuts in Social Security. We don't want major cuts in Medicaid. We don't want major cuts in any social services. We certainly don't want cuts in USAID. I mean, we're... Our farmers are selling grain to the Agency for International Development, which feeds starving people abroad, in Africa in particular. And now, the food is rotting on the docks. So we want to stop this because it makes no sense at all to have food rotting on the docks when the money is available. And the fact that Elon Musk says no, he has no authority. Elon Musk is not appointed. The president tried to give him power, but the president... Elon Musk is not a government official. To be a government official, the president can appoint you. Okay, maybe you did. But he's got to be confirmed by the Senate, which he certainly hasn't been. So he has no authority, although he's assuming the authority. And we will beat that in court, I'm confident.
Great. Thank you. We do now have Attorney General James for an update.
Thank you so much. I apologize for being late. I just arrived from Albany, speaking to members of the legislature about the urgency of the situation and how it's now... It's so critically important that individuals understand that we are facing a constitutional crisis. I want to thank Congressman Nadler. I want to thank my friends and colleagues, Kevin Jennings, the CEO of Lambda Legal, as well as Donna Lieberman, the Executive Director for Niklu. And I've been fortunate to coordinate with them on a lot of the issues that we are confronting. We've been fortunate to coordinate closely with them as we fought to basically defend our rights and defend our democracy. Now is the time for all of us who believe in the rule of law to stand up, individuals who value our most fundamental rights, to step up and to fight back. We are seeing the most brazen and undemocratic attack on our system of governance in our lifetime. And thankfully, my colleagues, Democratic attorneys general all across this nation, we prepared for this. We prepared for this nine months ago. And so we were ready on day one because during Trump I, we filed over 100 lawsuits against Trump I, led by New York and California. And we won 80% of our cases. Why? One, because they had terrible lawyers. Two, because they did not know the Administrative Procedure Act. Three, because... Three, because we had a number of judges who were sympathetic to our cause. But now it's different. They have a playbook, Project 2025. Despite the fact during the campaign that they claimed that they knew nothing about it, they lied. They've got the Supreme Court. They have more conservative judges on the bench. And we have strategically decided to stay away from certain circuits. They know the law, and he has better lawyers, and they are much more organized. And so on day one, we filed legal actions, including lawsuits and amicus briefs to combat President Trump's illegal efforts and Elon Musk, his minions, his band of musketeers. And that includes the executive order to end birthright citizenship, which is enshrined in the Fourteenth Amendment, which grew out of slavery. But also, obviously, is something that we all respect and we all know was fought for and is enshrined in a number of Supreme, United States Supreme Court cases. And also Section 1401 of the Immigration and Nationality Act. And we raise concerns also about the misleading federal buyout plan. And this appears to be another effort to reduce the federal government's ability to do its job, but also it's about President Trump and Elon Musk basically paying for tax cuts at the expense of social services and our social network. So it's important that all of us, that we work in concert together. It's also important that we were instrumental in addressing the pause by OMB, which effectively tried to stop payment on federal obligations like law enforcement and Meals on Wheels and Medicaid and veterans, and the list goes on. Our safety net, obviously, was disrupted for a period of time. And government should be a tool for good, not a tool to disrupt the lives of Americans. The direct assault on Congress's power of the purse would have thrown our nation into chaos. The disrespect for the co-equal branch of government and the failure to understand the constitutional order of things. But once again, it was Democratic attorneys generals stepping up once again. And my office also worked with our partners to sue the Trump administration and the Treasury Department for illegally providing Elon Musk and DOGE unauthorized access to our addresses, our tax information, our Social Security numbers, our payment system, our most sensitive personal information to individuals who are less than 25 years old. We also have taken a stand against President Trump and Elon Musk's attempt to kill the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau, which was created in the aftermath of the meltdown following the foreclosure debacle. The only reason that we should be concerned is, obviously, this is an attempt to hurt Americans and hurt everyday New Yorkers. It's chaos, confusion, and contempt for government and contempt for our system of government as we know it. They basically want to impose a program or a government, which is a unitarian form of government where the power lies in the hands of one man. And all of us pledge allegiance to the flag, not to the king, not to one individual. And so many have asked me, Tish, do you believe our system of government can hold up? And I say yes. And I say to everyone that the president is not the most powerful individual in these United States. The most powerful force in these United States are its people. And it's really critically important that we understand that and we do not lose hope and think that we have no power. We do. Because villains and thieves have historically been brought down, and they never, ever win. Working families in New York and beyond rely upon government. They rely upon CFPB to stop companies and big banks from exploiting them, from all of these junk fees and all of the abuse and exploitation and deceptive business practices. And that's why we're stepping up as attorneys general to protect that agency, but also to assume their responsibilities in all of our respective states. It's also important that individuals understand that we've also taken action against NIH, the National Institute of Health, because the National Institute of Health funds the University of Albany, the University of Rochester, the University of Buffalo, Stony Brook, where they're doing all of these trials to find a cure to cancer, to Parkinson's, to heart disease, all of these brilliant minds. And so they illegally attempted to slash funding to these universities and these research institutions. And we have stepped up to ensure that those hateful attacks are stopped. And we also stepped up against this cultural war on trans community, this hateful attacks on the trans community, trans community which has been used over and over and over again during their campaign and even to this day as a cudgel to divide us. We cannot normalize this behavior, and we cannot shrink from our responsibility. Not elected officials and not citizens. We have a duty and a responsibility to uphold the law and to uphold and protect this experiment we call democracy. Look, I know this is a lot, and you can rest assured that there's much more chaos to come. But I want all of you to know that the chaos is deliberate. They're throwing everything at us, everything up against the wall to see what sticks. It is meant to disrupt, confuse, demoralize you, and to scare you. But we should not be afraid. We've been here before. Let there be no doubt about it, as we are in a crisis, which is what the great Thomas Paine warned us would try. This is a time that would try our souls. But all of us who believe in the promise of America, all of us who believe in a multicultural pluralistic society, all of those who believe that my history cannot be erased, all of those who built, all of those who believe that this country was built on the rule of law and democracy as we know it, we are responsible for speaking out, resisting, and using our available tools to protect our democracy. It's up to us to prevail, and it will take the efforts of everyone. Everyone has a role. Elected officials, public citizens, public servants, all of us together pulling in the same decision, the same direction. And we cannot put all of the responsibility on the hands of Democrats. It's time that we flood the phones of Republicans in Congress and demand that they do their jobs. And they do not concede or be usurped by Elon Musk and teenagers, kids, and individuals who have not been vetted, not been subject to conflicts of interest. I thank you, Congressmember, for all that you have done.
Well, thank you. I want to, on behalf of everybody on this call, and I want to thank you for everything you have done and along with the other Democratic attorneys general who are among the leaders of the fight against Trump and Musk and to maintain constitutional democracy in this country.
I appreciate you for being a fellow defender in the fight to protect the rights of New Yorkers. Let us continue, but flood those phones. Call Republicans. Tell them to do their job. Tell them to stand up and do the right thing. Tell them that we do not live under the power of a king. Good night, everyone.
Thank you, Tish.
Thank you, Attorney General James. Now let's move back to the question and answer portion. So we're going to move to Rachel Landis from the Upper West Side. Rachel, do we have you?
Hi, I'm here. Hi, Congressman. Thank you for hosting us tonight. I wanted to ask a question about the mayor, which I know we already touched on a little bit tonight. One of my biggest concerns right now is the fact that we have a president who stands so clearly not just against New York City's values, but against New York City in general as an institution that maybe he never found quite the home in or comfort in that he wanted to. And I was wondering, how can we best protect our New York City values with an administration that's against us and a mayor that's so clearly in that administration's pocket?
Well, you're quite right about the administration and about Trump. Trump comes from New York City, but he's certainly not of New York City. He originally lived here for many years. And, you know, even as far back as 1973, he was found guilty, along with his father, of racial discrimination in housing. So none of what he's doing now is a surprise. He and his henchmen, Elon Musk, are trying to destroy our democracy. And obviously, we have to fight against letting them destroy our democracy. And you mentioned the mayor. That's a good example of holding the mayor hostage to the president's political goals. So he's destroying the Justice Department as any real Department of Justice, despite its title. And it's being made into a Department of Injustice. And there is no way that we can allow this to stand, and we have to keep fighting against it because if we don't keep fighting against it, they could prevail. And I have, you know, I called on the mayor to resign a while ago, and I've now called for the mayor to be removed from office because he's such a threat to New York.
Great, thank you, Congressman. Now let's move to Jeff Weiss from the Upper East Side.
Hi, good evening, and thank you for having me on this program tonight to ask the question. Recently, the Democratic strategist James Carville said that the Trump administration will collapse within 30 days, that step-by-step things are going to fall apart. We saw during the recess last week, many Republican members faced town halls similar to this one in person, where people were totally upset with what their members were doing, most of them being Republican. And despite the vote in the House tonight for the budget, do you think that Republican members, after they hear from enough constituents, are going to begin to back down to some degree or stand up to Trump? Or are they just totally going to capitulate?
I think that, you know, you mentioned the vote tonight, and the vote tonight is one Republican, exactly one Republican, voted against the Republican budget resolution, which calls for huge cuts, $880 billion in Medicaid and all kinds of cuts in food aid and in Social Security and in Medicare and you name it, every social service. Exactly one Republican voted against it, and it passed the House. Now, I don't know whether the pressure is going to get to be too unbearable. I suspect that it won't. I suspect that their fealty to Donald Trump is such that nothing people say is going to affect it. And I think that probably they're going to continue doing exactly what they're doing, and the remedy is going to be the election next year, which I do feel confident Democrats will win if Republicans continue on this course, as they seem to be doing. We will win the election next year. And I say that for several reasons. The Republicans won the 2024 election based on inflation and immigration. Those are their two issues. And the president promised that he would bring down inflation. What is he doing? He's instituting tariffs, and tariffs are highly inflationary. That is, because a tariff is really a tax that everybody pays on anything manufactured abroad, which is a lot of things. And secondly, he wants to have mass deportations. I don't know how many, how massive they will be, but whatever the extent, deportations are also inflationary because you're removing the people who harvest our crops, who work in our restaurants, and they're going to have to be replaced by people with higher wages. So it's also inflationary. So I think it's safe to say that by the time of the election next year, the inflation is going to be very high, and people vote their pocketbooks. And if nothing's happened in the interim, the Democrats will win. And then we will have an even more effective way of opposing the administration than we do now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. So now our next question goes to Monica Attia on the East Side.
Thank you. It's great to be with you, Congressman. My question is, Republicans send mixed signals. Some have said that they will never touch Social Security and Medicare. Others, like Jody Arrington, the House Budget Committee Chair, are pushing for reform, including potential benefit cuts. On his podcast, Steve Bannon has said, because a lot of MAGA's are on Medicaid, Republicans cannot abolish the program. How worried should we be? What is the true picture of where the House stands on entitlements?
We should be very worried. We saw tonight how the House stands on entitlement because the House voted with only one Republican dissenting vote for a budget resolution that will necessitate huge cuts, about $880 billion in Medicaid and huge cuts in just about everything else in order to finance a $4.5 trillion tax cut for millionaires and billionaires. And that vote just occurred today with one Republican voting against it. And so that shows where they are at. And it shows we have our work cut out for us to stop this because the cuts that they're going to make are so large that they're going to be deadly for people. And we have to stop it, and we have to fight it with every means at our disposal.
Thank you, Congressman. So we received a large number of questions about immigration, and we wanted to combine some of them. So Congressman Nadler, what specific actions are you and your colleagues taking to protect immigrants in our city, ensuring access to care, preventing ICE from targeting vulnerable spaces, resisting deportation efforts, and supporting migrant children in our schools?
We are supporting the sanctuary city status of New York. New York has been a sanctuary city, and what a sanctuary city means is that it will not permit ICE agents to come into a school or a shelter or a hospital or any building without a court warrant. So they can't just come in looking for immigrants without a court warrant. And our mayor is now, I said before, I think I've said it on this call, that I've called for the mayor to be removed because of a number of reasons, one of which is that he is now colluding with the Trump administration to eliminate New York City status as a, as a, New York City status as a sanctuary city. He, the president or the administration, the federal administration, has the mayor in a short leash because they, you know, he was charged with some crimes, and they moved to dismiss the charges without prejudice, meaning they can bring it again at any time. And Tom Homan went on Fox News and said they will withhold the charges. They will not prosecute so long as the mayor cooperates on immigration. And that's why I've called for the mayor to be removed from office because he is betraying New York and our values. And, you know, we have bills on the floor to help immigrants. I'm sorry, we have bills on the floor against immigration. The Republicans have put those bills on the floor. The Republicans have put those bills on the floor time and time again. And we're doing everything we can to stop them.
Thank you Congressman. Similarly, we also received a large number of questions about Ukraine and worked to combine them. So what concrete actions are you and your colleagues taking to counter Trump's pro-Russia stance, ensuring continued military and financial support for Ukraine, pushing back against misinformation, and preventing the erosion of US leadership in global democracy and security?
Well, the United States has stood for collective security since 1949, really since 1948 when we started the Marshall Plan, since 1949 when the NATO treaty was first signed. And nothing has changed. We have, the United States has supplied a large amount of arms aid to Ukraine, as has Western Europe. Trump says that they have supplied, that we have supplied a lot more than they have. That's not true. They have supplied a little more arms aid than we have. Now, Trump is trying to switch sides, but he cannot simply, he's trying to switch sides. With that disgraceful vote in the UN the other day that he can control because the president controls the vote in the UN. But the fact of the matter is that he can't necessarily control the actions of the government because appropriations are voted by Congress, they have been voted. He can't simply shut them off. So he can try to prevent aid in the future, but as long as Congress has a majority to support that aid, it will be difficult. It's clear that Putin is a dictator. He always has been, or at least he has been for the last 25 years since he consolidated his power. He just passed a constitutional amendment allowing him to serve until 2030. He's been serving since 1998. And he's a clearly a dictator. The president said that Zelensky is a dictator. This is ridiculous. Zelensky was elected in a Democratic election. The president says he has an approval, that Zelensky has an approval rate of 4%. That's not true, it's 57%. And 57% is a remarkably high number for a wartime leader. Because after all, the people in the Ukraine are making sacrifices. They've lost thousands and thousands of lives. So we have to continue supporting them. And the president has to be thwarted in his ambition to switch sides because the United States cannot switch sides.
Thank you Congressman. Now, let's move to Arlene Geiger on the Upper West Side with her question.
Hi, I'm Arlene Geiger. I'm the leader of the Upper West Side Action Group. And I live in Congressman Nadler's district. So Democrats are furious at what Trump, Musk, and the MAGA trifecta have been doing. We need you to, my question is, we need you to effectively convey this fury and anger. How will you do this? And related to that, how will you make sure that this anger is heard and seen, not just on MSNBC and CNN, but will reach a wider range of voters? It's really important that Democrats visibly and viscerally convey the anger that we all feel.
Well, yes, I obviously, I totally agree with that. I have, let me say some of the things I have done first. I have raised my voice in Congress incessantly. I went to, I demonstrated in front of the EPA. I've demonstrated in front of the Stonewall Monument along with other people. And we have to, you're right, we have to go beyond MSNBC or CNN. We have to get, we have to do our own podcasts. We have to do, we have to develop our own Joe Rogans and do a lot of podcasts and use social media in order to communicate where we stand and why where we stand is the right place to stand. We can do this as long as we're energetic enough and spend our resources in the appropriate manner on social media, on podcasts, and on personal engagement than on the floor of the House.
Thank you.
Thank you Congressman. Now, let's move to Nancy Hoffman from Stuy Town for her question.
Here I am. Thank you, Representative Nadler. Before I ask my question, I wanted to get some guidance on communicating with General Charles Q. Brown Jr., who has just been dismissed as Chair of the Joint Chiefs of Staff. When I wrote a letter to Lieutenant Governor, Lieutenant Colonel Alexander Vindman to thank him, the Pentagon sent the letter back and it never reached him. And I don't want that to happen with the general who has been so embarrassingly let go from his post. If you could convey in your Facebook page or somewhere some PO address or some way of communicating with him, I'd appreciate it. Forty years of service are so impressive and it has been so demeaning and horrific to observe what has been going on with him and his colleagues in the upper levels of the military. My question was--
Call my office and we'll put you in touch with him.
Thank you. The Constitution mandates that we, the people, have a way to communicate that is actually funded by the government. The Supreme Court has intervened from time to time in the life of the postal service and even gotten involved in times of censorship of mail coming through. And it's possible to monkey with the postal service quite seriously, grievously, and as we have seen, even affect our voting capacity. And now that we have DeJoy out, he was, he did a horrific job and certainly hurt the postal service. I'm concerned that Trump will, of course, rush in with someone who will further destroy or even change the nature of the postal service so that it becomes a private enterprise with no protection as it now has for the postal workers. And I would like to echo Arlene's strongly worded insistence that you and your colleagues make more noise around the country, not just in the chambers of the House, but in public where you can be heard decrying these incursions on our rights and on the constitutional norms that we've grown used to. But my question directly is, how can you protect post office at this juncture?
Well, you're quite right. The post office is older, in fact, than the Constitution. The Continental Congress appointed Benjamin Franklin as the first Postmaster General back in 1775, 14 years before the Constitution was even adopted. So we've always had a post office as a government agency. The president wants to privatize it, as he wants to privatize a lot of things. But to do that, he would have to get it through Congress. And I am confident that we will have the votes to stop him from doing that. No matter the pressure of Amazon and all the other private delivery services, most members of Congress still know that their constituents want the reliability of the federal postal service and do not want its privatization because they know that that would increase the costs and decrease the reliability. So I don't, I'm not that concerned because I'm sure we, when and if this is attempted, we will have the support in the country and in the Congress to stop it. And so I would want to assure you of that.
Great, thank you Congressman. We got a lot of questions on congestion pricing. And one constituent question was, how can New York City preserve congestion pricing as it's already demonstrated great success in just a short period of time?
Congestion pricing is frankly going to be pretty easy to preserve. It has demonstrated a great deal of success immediately. Unlike what the president says, the president says that it's discriminatory against people from New Jersey and it hurts them. But the fact of the matter is that 93% of people who come into Manhattan from the suburbs, suburbs in Long Island, Connecticut, in New York, Rockland County, in New Jersey, 93% come in by mass transit. And it's mass transit is subsidized by congestion pricing. And the congestion pricing will pay for making a lot of the stations handicap accessible, will pay for repairing track that was laid down in 1931 and has to be repaired so that the trains don't get derailed. And the people who are complaining about this, or the people who pay the fees, the 7% who are coming into Manhattan, they are driving their cars into Manhattan. And if they're bringing their cars into Manhattan, they're parking here, which means they're paying a parking fee, which means they're not the low-income people. They're people who can afford cars and can afford parking fees. And it's right and proper that they pay a small fee, $9, to support all the people who are being benefited from this. Now, the president says that he wants to stop this. He has no legal right to stop it. The federal government signed a tolling agreement. The president wants to un-sign it, but once it's signed, it's signed. And it's no different than the tolls on the New Jersey Turnpike or any interstate highway. We have an agreement to toll a transportation facility, whether that's the New Jersey Turnpike or the New York Thruway or any other transportation facility. It's no different than putting a toll on the subway system. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, let's go to Diane Ronaldo from the Upper West Side with her question.
Hi, thank you Congressman Nadler for hosting this town hall and taking my question. I am a longtime constituent and I want to thank you for your years of progressive service to our district. I want to loop back to the budget because it's really looming upon us right now. Last year, Democrats did what was often referred to as bailing out the Speaker of the House when he couldn't pull together a majority to pass the budget and prevent the shutdown himself. That didn't help us. We are where we are today with, you know, Doge taking over federal departments, freezing federal funds illegally and firing federal employees. And another looming dispute, possibly seeing the Republicans splintering again. So I don't see a world in which they do anything more than minor compromise with us. So how far are Democrats willing to go this year? Are we willing to allow a Trump-Musk shutdown and let them own the harm that that would do? Or do you think we are again going to, you know, compromise? What is our strategy and how far are we willing to go on the budget?
Strategy, as we saw tonight in tonight's vote, is to give them not one single vote on the budget. And if that causes a shutdown because they can't arrange things on their side of the aisle, then so be it. We're not going to compromise with them and with their plans to take $880 billion out of Medicaid and to take huge amounts of money from SNAP and from food aid and from all other social services, from the schools. We're not going to give them a single vote. We're not going to help them at all. If they can do it on their own, they'll do it on their own. I don't think they can.
Thank you.
Thank you Congressman. Let's move to Alan Roskoff from Hell's Kitchen with his question.
One minute.
Alan?
I'm trying to get the video working. Can you see that? Okay. Okay, let me ask my question while we're trying to get the video on. Given Trump's vicious and dangerous attacks on minorities, the LGBT community, particularly the trans community, women, immigrants, civil rights, the rule law, and so much more, why hasn't the Democratic Party and its elected officials risen to the occasion and provided the leadership America so desperately needs? History teaches us the Vietnam War mass protest rallies, Martin Luther King-style marches in Washington, civil disobedience, boycotts, shutdowns, and strikes work effectively to rally those who cherish democracy. Democratic Party leadership seems particularly to blame for a flat-footed non-response to Trump's critical acts. Could you speak to why this is happening? And thank you for having me on Congressman Nadler.
You're quite welcome. I think that you mentioned the protests at the Vietnam War. They didn't succeed instantly. I remember protesting in the Vietnam War for several years and it took several years. Now, we are, I don't think it's fair to say the Democratic Party is not opposing what Trump is trying to do, is not opposing his anti-trans and anti-gay measures. I think we are. I think we're opposing it in every way that we can. But sometimes it takes time to see the results. And that may be one of it right now. We, I know that members of Congress in the, in the House at least, I'm there in the House every day. We have been voting against everything they do on trying to put legislation through against trans people, against LGBTQ people. And so I don't think it's fair to say that we're not doing it, you know. We had the Stonewall, I was at a Stonewall rally just two weeks ago because they were taking the word, the trans out of the title. And we know that it was trans people who started the Stonewall Rebellion. And I got the National Monument over there set up a number of years ago. And now they're trying to change it. And I was at a rally opposing this change. And we're not going to permit them to do this. And we're going to stop it.
But Jerry, we're not having the massive demonstrations, the massive rallies, the Martin Luther King, you know, what happened in the 60s should be happening now across the country. Hundreds of thousands of people should be going to Washington.
I agree with you, but in the 60s, it took several years to develop that. Hopefully, we can develop that much quicker now, more quickly, I should say now.
I think we have to start moving. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're getting to our last two questions of the night. So let's go to John Wallmeyer from the Upper West Side with his question.
Congressman Nadler, thank you for having the forum this evening. In the past five weeks under the Trump administration, NYU Langone and Mount Sinai Hospital, both canceled appointments for individuals under the age of 19 seeking gender-affirming care due to an executive order causing a chill, threatening to revoke federal funds from the institutions if they provide it said care. What is the Congress planning to do to ensure that aggressively allocated funding gets to the institutions they need?
Well, it's not Congress that should do something here. We did allocate the funding. The Trump administration is trying to take it away. And enforcing what Congress did is a matter for the courts. And I think that Tish James is in court in New York on that right now. The attorneys general in many states are doing this. But in particular, you mentioned NYU Langone, that's in New York. And Tish James is in court right now seeking to have that action reversed.
Thank you Congressman.
You're welcome.
Great, thank you. And our last question of the night is Michelle Winfield. Michelle? Michelle, are you on? Michelle?
She wasn't on your list.
She is on the list, but I'm not seeing her responding. But so Congressman, I think that's all the questions we have for this evening.
Okay, well, thank you.
She was visible. She, I think she was trying to unmute herself.
Well, let's see if she can.
Yeah, it looks like she's experiencing technical difficulties. But the good thing is we will be hosting more of these in the future.
Well, before we conclude, I want to share three things that people can do to fight back. Number one-- Number one, stay engaged by attending community events, rallies, marches and events like this. Number two, share your ideas with me, with organizations fighting back against Trump and with your personal networks of family and friends. If you know about a rally or want me to take a certain action, please let my office know. If you have family and friends who are represented by Republicans in Congress, they have a lot of power to pressure their representatives to stand up to Trump. Finally, help look out for vulnerable populations. If you have time, volunteer, speak out and show them that you care and are fighting for them. As I said earlier, I will not stop fighting back against Donald Trump and Elon Musk. I will not back down and I will not stop pushing back against their attempts to dismantle our democracy, strip away our rights and put corporate interests above the interests of the American people. This fight is far from over, but together we will resist, we will persist and we will prevail. Thank you all again. I'm now going to turn it over to Matt, who will be sharing some information about how to best follow what I am doing in Congress.
Thank you, Congressman Nadler. I encourage you all to sign up to our newsletter by visiting our website nadler.house.gov. You can follow us on X at RepJerryNadler. We're also on Facebook and now Blue Sky as well. So thank you all for joining us. We will be hosting more of these in the future. And thank you. Have a good night.